All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 5:33 PM. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Sarah, I'm looking at the owl. Can you see that Justin is here?
Yes, I can see Justin and Mr. and Mrs. Nagley.
Okay, and Chris just walked in. Hi, Chris. And so, I guess, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Looks pretty full to me.
I know, none of these half-hour meetings going tonight. Okay, then we will start with our administrative matters. Sarah, how is this handled?
So, this is an annual organizational meeting of the Select Board, which is the first meeting after town meeting. Our newly-elected Select Board members have been sworn in in order to act upon this meeting. So, you, as the former Chair, have called the meeting to order, and then you can entertain nominations for the following positions, starting at the top. Once we elect a Chair, then the Chair can take over chairing the rest of the meeting. So, you can just ask for nominations for Chair.
Right, I would entertain nominations for Chair. Sarah?
I would like to nominate Megan Smith for Chair of the Select Board.
Thank you.
Same, I would like to nominate.
I'll second that. All in favor?
May I make another nomination?
Yes, you may.
May I nominate Seth Bridge for Vice Chair of the Select Board?
Yes, you may, and I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we will, I would like to elect Sarah as Clerk of the Board, Sarah Tolly, as Clerk of the Board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All righty, well, then I guess I'll continue.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I know you all wanted the job.
Thank you for serving.
Everywhere I go, people want my, want this job. So, the meeting, we have a copy of the meeting schedule here. I were hoping to keep to this pretty, you know, without making many changes. I am in the process of possibly joining a board that meets quarterly on Monday, so if that is the case, we will have to move those meetings or not, or I just won't be present for them. But I haven't heard back from them yet. So, we went ahead with this, this schedule, which is pretty straightforward, addressing the holidays.
There, I just want to confirm that we can add the suggested dates to the calendar, or if there were any conflicts. So, the first one is May 26th, the conflict with Memorial Day. I had suggested doing it on Tuesday, 5:27 at 5:30.
Okay. Yep, oh, there, I see, I didn't see that written, I apologize. Yep, that's good.
So, I might have one on that day, a little niece's school event, but TBD, and you don't need me if the other two are here. Or I could virtually...
And I'm April 14th.
You will not be here, okay. Seth will not be here April 14th. Monday, April 14th. Okay, I think I've, I'm pretty sure I'm here until June. I might miss a meeting, but I don't think so. That is the month, that is the month that I turn 70, so I'm going to be having quite a month.
Okay.
Try to make the meeting. So, Tuesday, the 14th of October, we'll go ahead and put that in, Sarah, and accept that rescheduled date. And then Monday, December 15th, instead of the 22nd. And that's if we need it, you know, we'll see where we are.
That's usually the finalization of the budget, so if it's a meeting, it might be a quick meeting just to discuss budget.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks for putting this together.
Sure, and then we'll update that, finalize it, and then we'll get it to the Sheriff.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I should know something this week. So, before we, um, do you think we should wait till we, to get it to the Sheriff?
Yeah. We'll wait, they still, they have pretty much most of the schedule through, um, through the end of this year, or the end of the fiscal year. So, um, I, I don't think there's any problem in waiting about a week to send them, to them.
Okeydoke, all right. Well, thanks for pulling that together.
Do you want, do you want a motion, or are you saying?
Do we need a motion for this?
No, we want a, we want a motion to set the meeting schedule, the regular meetings, on the second and fourth Monday of the month at 5:30, with the rescheduling of a few dates. This calendar will be posted on the website. So, that's where we find out more information.
So, I'll move that we set our regular meeting schedule to the second and fourth Monday, every Monday at 5:30 here at the Town Office and virtually, with some dates we schedule around holidays, mainly Memorial Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the week prior to Christmas.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, the next thing we're going to adopt are the Rules of Conduct and Procedure at Public Meetings. Is that correct, Sarah? Or is this the Select Board Rules and Procedures, the one that's printed off here for us?
So, the, um, the Select Board Rules and Procedures was the former policy that we had adopted years before.
Yep.
This new policy replaces the Select Board Rules of Adoption, of Procedure, and it enacts essentially the rules for all public bodies in Mendon.
So, these were updated, um, as part of the new Rules of Procedures brought out by VLCT, correct?
I, correct. Again, Sarah Buxton, if you want to provide further detail, that would be great.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Sure, so these were, I think, initially updated last year when VLCT updated model rules because of the open meeting law changes. And then, we also, Sarah proposed some minor changes here, and I can highlight those, or Sarah can highlight those. But I noticed that, having, serving on the Planning Commission, we were, it was on our radar, or our agenda, to adopt also rules of procedure, and we were going to potentially mirror this. And what I would recommend is that, as a town, so we don't have a variety of different rules and conduct and procedure, that the Select Board just set it for all the boards. And in here, it does say that the commissions or boards that fall under the town can adapt if they need. For example, if they want to change where in the agenda the comment period is, they can just do that, either on a meeting-by-meeting basis, as can we, or they can do it for whatever period of time, you know, as an indefinite change. But the main changes here is that it applies to all bodies. It clarifies procedures around opening the door and having public safety present, that everybody needs to abide by. It clarifies and is, follows the law exactly with regard to when we have to post an agenda for all bodies, just so that everybody's all on the same page. We already do that line here. And it adds, in terms of, oh, there's a little bit of a, if you look at number, um, in Part D, Public Participation, it also adds an additional number nine, where it says, "Meeting attendees will refrain from behavior which will disrupt a public meeting. It will include making loud noises, clapping, shouting, booing, hissing, talking, and private conversations audible to other meeting participants, or engaging in any other activity in a manner that disturbs, disrupts, or impedes the orderly conduct of meeting." That's standard conduct that I've seen in a lot of other towns, and it doesn't usually apply here. But for other boards, that may be the case, where it's a useful one for the Chair to be able to point to that and say, "You're out of order, these are our rules."
Okay.
It also, just as a, as a point, in terms of comments by the public, it does say that, um, that people need to say their names. They have to be called on by the Chair, they have to say their names so that we can record that in the minutes. And that at each meeting, there'll be a reasonable time afforded on the agenda for public comment, that it's two minutes, that we can, by vote of our body, change that if we or anyone else wants it to be longer, or you may say, you know, you give someone three minutes if they ask for it. And I think the only other change, the little tweak, was that, oh, we just clarified that members of the public can attend a meeting and don't necessarily have to identify themselves. Like, sometimes online, there have been meetings that I've attended here where people will say, you know, who's there, who's there? And we don't have to do that, we don't have to get their names, but they are not allowed to participate or to speak.
If we don't know their name.
If we don't know their name.
All right.
So, that just clarifies that. And I think that's the, I think that's the rest of it.
All right, so I would like, like to make a motion that we adopt the Town Amendment Rules of Conduct and Procedure at Public Meetings for all public meetings and commissions in the Town of Mendon, then, this new updated procedure.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want us to sign a one copy, either this copy or someone's copy?
Yeah.
Yep, here there, here's one.
So, you'll sign that. And I did want to just bring to your attention that Carol has raised her hand for comment.
On this, on this, or is that for public comment?
That's for this, what you were just speaking of.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, I just have a question. I'm wondering why, um, why members of the public are included in the Select Board Rules of Procedure? So, why, why is visitor conduct including in what you, what you're all supposed to follow?
Because it's the procedures for the meeting, for the meetings that we're holding, and for, um, for general, just for the general rules of how the meetings are held. All three, you know, all the different commissions in town.
You guys don't follow that rule.
So, Brian, I'm, I'm just wondering, because you already have a visitor's code of conduct, and that, that encompasses that. So, I'm just wondering why it's in both.
So, this is for rules of conduct for all meetings, and under the open meeting law and others, the, the public bodies can make their own rules of conduct, and the Robert's Rules of Order also allow the Chair to set conduct. This just makes it transparent, so it's not sort of arbitrarily applied on a meeting-by-meeting basis.
It just sounds like you're trying to limit speech.
We're not. That's not what we're trying, that's not what we're trying to do. Is that all? Okay, the next item on the agenda is to just move that the newspaper of general, indicate the newspaper of general circulation be the Rutland Herald.
So, I will, did you just say you moved?
Yeah, I'll move that.
So, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And our notice of, I'd like to move that we accept for our notice of public postings, the Town Office, the Town Garage, the Town Recreation Area, Mendon website, Facebook, and Front Porch Forum.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Megan, can I just add a clarification for that? So, the official postings are required to be on the website in three different places in town. And we've indicated where those are. The additional two locations, Facebook and Front Porch Forum, are, um, are additional resources that people can find out information, but they're not required by statute. So, I, I just wanted to make that clarification, that we will be posting per state statute in the three locations and the website, and we will also be posting on those others. But if one of those others is omitted for any reason, for technical difficulties or whatnot, that it doesn't negate the proper warning of a meeting.
Okay.
Problem Facebook or the website.
So, to clarify, Town Office, Town Garage, Town Recreation Area, and the website are the four official spots. Okay. All righty. I'm going to make a motion that we appoint a pound, a pound keeper, Rod McQuaid. And who is our tree warden?
Chris Baird, our road commissioner.
He's sitting here. I wondered, I knew it was Chris, I couldn't, I didn't know what Chris was. And so, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Rod McQuaid as pound keeper, and Chris as our tree warden. Chris Baird, excuse me, Commissioner Chris Baird as our tree warden.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The next thing we need to do is policy review and adoption, the first one being the Mendon Open Meeting Law Compliance Policy. Sarah, would you like to take over?
Yeah, I'm going to just give you a brief rundown. So, which has changed a little bit. You do not have a draft policy in front of you. With the changes that were made to the Select Board Rules and Procedures, it may affect what we propose for the compliance policy. This was an informal policy used for internal controls on how, with the current staff in the office, we are going to be, we are going to ensure that we meet the open meeting law posting requirements. So, where you just set forth requirements, and the state statute sets forth requirements of posting within 48 hours of the meeting in three different places in town and the website, that's a required posting on a Saturday for a Monday meeting. So, you know, boards can post on a Saturday, and, you know, to make sure that they're making the 48 hours. But the compliance policy really highlights with the office staff when information needs to be submitted to them in order to make the physical posting at the office, if the board chooses to utilize that as help to them, or if they're going to physically make the posting themselves. Or, more importantly, is the postings on Front Porch Forum, the Facebook page, and the website, which typically are done by Jesse or myself to, you know, make sure that those are posted. Right now, the separate boards and commissions do not have access to the website. And that's done in order to make sure that we control the content of the website, as well as posting in the, in similar forums and fashions, that things are, are posted where appropriate, and not just on pages that might not be relevant.
Okay, so, I'm...
Yeah, we're, we're not really ready to adopt a policy tonight, because now I need to talk to Jesse and figure out how we, we provide this information to the different boards and commissions.
Okay.
Can I just offer one thing for thought, just food for thought for the future? I think I mentioned this to you, and mainly said that I would bring it to the two of you and see what you think. But maybe in the spring, like when the snow's melted? And I don't know what you guys would think about maybe having the boards and commissions invited to a meeting with us, where maybe we could go over so that everybody is doing things the same way?
We're going to do a training, that's, that's coming up later.
Okay, good.
It's going to be recorded and used ongoing.
Great, okay.
That's tonight, perfect. Think, great minds think alike.
Good.
So, the, Sarah, the next is the Conflict of Interest and Purchasing Policy.
Yes. So, that does not require a readoption, but it does require review from the Select Board to make sure that everybody understands disclosing conflicts of interest, and also the levels of bidding procedures on what requires just obtaining quotes from a few different sources, or as the thresholds get higher, to go out to a formal bid process posted on the Vermont Bid Board and our website.
So, that, I don't see that here in writing. Is that, so that's nothing that we're, I need to move to adopt?
No, you're not required to, but I do want to put it in the minutes that it was reviewed. So, if, if you're not prepared to review it tonight, which I'm sorry if that's not in front of you, we will postpone that and table it until the next meeting.
I don't see it here.
I don't think we have it.
So, let's do that next, postpone it for next meeting.
Yeah, is, unless Jesse's still there and she can print it off for you.
Sarah's running out to see if Jesse's still here. So, while we're waiting for that, we can move on to the Town Road and Bridge Standards?
Yep, this is an annual adoption of the Road and Bridge Standards required by V-Trans. And, so, this is a readoption annually with no changes from last year. It essentially spells out the, um, the standards that we're going to follow in maintaining our roads.
Okay, that doesn't have anything to do with discussion around the, aren't we supposed to be doing a reclassification or a...
Yeah, nope. So, the reclassification of the roads would be reflected on the Certificate of Highway Mileage, which you adopt, or you approved in February. That, that is a calculation of what, how many Class III, Class IV, Class I and Class II roads we have in Mendon. And we do receive funding reimbursement from the state on the number of mileage we have for each category. Actually, they don't pay for Class IV or Class, or legal trails. But Class I and Class II, if we maintain them, we receive reimbursement from them. And that is indicative, or outlined in our budget with state aid to highways.
Okay. Okay, so do I need to move to accept this Town Road and Bridge Standards?
Yes.
Move to adopt it? All right, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Town Roads and Bridge Standards for the municipality of Mendon, Vermont.
Okay, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the new one will have a new date of adoption for, is it every two years? Is that how that works? That we have to adopt it?
We adopt it annually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I, I just use the template, I'm sorry. That is going to be, the date of adoption will be updated the first page to reflect 3/10/25.
Okay.
And then, if you could sign the second page on one version and leave it in the folder. That second page does reflect the current, the current date.
Okay, oh yeah, March 10th, got it. So, the, the next thing up is our Goals and Objectives Review and Development. And I think this is going to be a pretty thorough session, but I'd love to begin with what's pertinent to Chris, so he doesn't have to stay here through all of this conversation. Oh, oh wait, Jesse just brought us in, excuse me. Jesse just brought us in the...
So, this is the Conflict of Interest, I'm familiar with it.
Conflict of Interest, which I have read.
Read this one. And then, the purchase, oh, this is the Purchasing and Conflict of Interest. Oh, I see, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's no change to it, correct?
No, there's no change to that.
Unless...
Because I've read, I've read all that too, yes.
This is the purchasing and conflict of interest, okay.
Yeah, and I actually just reviewed that recently.
And this has a date of adoption as 2021. It does not require readoption, but, you know, the Select Board needs to be familiar with the policy and the thresholds that we have in place regarding purchasing tiers and the requirements to follow in each one of those tiers.
Well, at the end of it, it has the three, for the three previous Select Board members as the adopters. So, I think I should, we should, the three of us should make an adoption, correct?
And that's fine, you can choose to do that, yep.
And then, the date can be changed to today versus 2021. So, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Town of Mendon Purchasing and Conflict of Interest Policy as of today.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Sarah, do you want us to sign this somewhere, or do you want to do an official, new copy?
Why don't we wait, so, there's no lines on this one? Why don't we wait till there's one with our names on it? And we can sign it.
Yeah, we'll sign it at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Sarah did.
Perfect, thank you.
So, um, again, we're going to go into the goals and objectives of the Select Board, and I have, I have already told attendees that if they find it tedious, that they do not have to stay for the end of the meeting. They might find it interesting. We have updated this some, but the first several involve Chris. So, um, Sarah, the Municipal Roads General Permit. Compliant, that is the one that, for the inventory that Chris is working on, correct?
Yeah, so, prior to last year, we were working on different state deadlines in order to come into compliance with the required segments that the state dictates on a certain timeframe that we upgrade. So, when I say we're compliant with the permit, is Chris and the crew have updated the necessary hydrologically-connected road segments to meet our MRGP permit. These deadlines continue, though. So, he is required to update a certain number of road segments with high priorities, you know, annually. And we're also required to keep existing road segments that are in compliance up to compliance. So, as we receive some damage to the roads, we have to bring those road segments back into compliance according to our permit. So, as part of the MRGP is to keep track of our inventories. And we do, we are due to update the Culver Inventory, hopefully this summer. We do have a grant from the Better Roads Program to update the Culver Inventory. This is something that we receive assistance from the Regional Planning Commission on. They come and help inspect and update our inventories. And so, we just want to get it on their radar that we hopefully can complete this this summer. Otherwise, it might be pushed off to next summer.
Is that something, that communication to Rutland, our responsibility, or is that something Chris works with them on?
Yeah, that's me.
I've already started.
Okay, he's already, he said he's already started.
So, Sarah and I, Sarah, you and I had a conversation earlier today to further that, I didn't forward the email yet, but the consensus was that, at the beginning of... I didn't forward the email yet, but the consensus was that at the beginning of fiscal year '26, so starting in July, I will be partnered up with the Regional Planning Commission. And with their help, we will do a full inventory of Mendon's culverts.
Can you just like drag around and classify each one or something?
Yeah, you gotta go segment by segment.
I just had my first tour of Wheelerville Road, notch all the way down Wheelerville culvert, just over the weekend. Amazing.
There's plenty up there.
Yeah, so that, there is a system called VT culverts in, online, that Chris and crew are able to get right in there and answer all of the questions that the culvert inventory requests. That will be with the help of the Regional Planning Commission. And then, ongoing, the inventory is updated as the road crew works on a particular culvert, they can update that, that system after they complete a project.
Okay. The next is, so yeah, we're just gonna go through all these ones that have to do with the roads. Road classification, notch road and falls road, summer of 2025.
This is the reclassification process. It's been decades since we've reclassified any of our roads. Specifically, the need for reclassification is the upper portion of the notch road where it had washed out during Irene and is now closed. That portion of the road will be declassified down to a legal trail in hopes of retaining the right-of-way, but it, you know, it will not be required to be maintained.
But I, let me just ask a question about that, because I went up and, as you suggested, I went up and looked at that the other day. So, what about the entrance to that, that whole area?
At the Girl Scout camp?
At the Girl Scout camp.
So, that area to the fencing and to the access to the parking lot on the right-hand side, that was, that would remain a Class 3, which it is right now. And it would only be the segment, right now, it's Class 3 that goes from the fencing that closes off the road down to the bridge. And then, it turns into Class 4 going up the other side until it meets the intersection of Falls Road. So, that whole section would be classified down to a legal trail. The legal trail allows you to retain the right-of-way, but not require you to maintain it. So, if for any reason, 100 years from now, we would still have that right-of-way, if for any reason we wanted to upgrade it in order to make it travelable again.
Okay.
Would, when that happens, or through a different process, it might make sense to change that yield sign to a stop sign, so, because the traffic goes from the notch road up Wheelerville, except to go down to the parking lot, you know, to get your dogs. And so, I don't know if that's through like a separate process, maybe we're gonna talk about things like signs at a different point in time, but I just wanted to flag that, because it doesn't have to be right-of-way, but it's an old yield sign when there was a road that went all the way through there.
Right, so the stop signs are outlined in our traffic ordinance. So, that would make, that would be a change to the traffic ordinance to change the stop or yield signs. Going back to the reclassification, we'd also be reclassifying the Falls Road, which formerly, or has been a legal trail, but now, after Irene, it's been used as a primary road to access multiple dozens of properties. And so, we would consider reclassifying that to a 4 or even sections of it to a 3 in order to be eligible for state grant funding and receive state funding for maintenance. At the same, we would have to bring it up to Class 3 specifications.
So, Chris, is this all stuff you guys have already reviewed? So, bringing it up to Class 3 standards is something that could, would be done by us? Or is that something we'd need to bid out and do an RFP for?
There are pieces we can do. There are massive pieces we do have to do an RFP for. There's a bank stabilization that needs to be done, where the hill is starting to encroach on the road, sliding forward. You also have, on the opposite side, where there's, the shoulder is deteriorating and not supported, it would have to be rebuilt. There's also changing the grade for the first two hills to make it that way. You're talking about excavating a great deal of material.
The zeros.
It's a, it's a steep first hill, and then it's a steep second hill with a very, big dumb work. It's better, but it's still a blind corner. We just wouldn't have enough machinery to be able to handle a job like that.
So, Sarah, is this a chicken and egg thing, where we can't reclassify the work till the road's done to get the grants? Or, I mean, is this something we need to think about putting in our budget?
On a legal trail, there are no grant funds that, that apply to maintenance of legal trails. There is some storm, some erosion control measures that could be done on a Class 4, but there's very little grant funds available for maintenance of this magnitude.
So, if, and I know you want to ask, set this up, why don't you put your?
I just wondered, I just wondered, where are we at? Do we have a full list of everything that we need to do to upgrade to either Class 3 or Class 4 sections? Do you have the information on everything we need?
We, we do not. So, about, yeah, so about five years ago, we had some engineering done by Dubai and King to take a look at throwing a cost estimate at us in order to do certain pieces of the work. We have retained $275,000 in the Highway Improvement Fund that has been earmarked for the Falls Road. And that is leftover funds from the disaster and from FEMA. We, we set, we set that money aside in the Highway Improvement Fund. But it is, the cost is going to exceed that. That's not, that's not going to do all of the repairs. And it may be that you, we cannot bring it up to Class 3 standards, and we can only bring up a section of the road to Class 3 standards.
And the benefit of that would be to be able to get grants for that piece of the, of the road, which is?
And specifically, there's a large culvert at the intersection of the Falls Road and Wheelerville Road, and it's actually in the right-of-way of a Class 3 road, but it still has not been eligible for grant funding under the class, under the Structures Grant Program, which is the largest grant program that would help upgrade Class 3 roads. We have a history of flooding, and as that culvert becomes overwhelmed, it washes out Wheelerville Road. I'm sorry, Seth, that you know all too well about this particular project. It washes out Wheelerville Road, and then the water goes behind all four of the abutments of Bridge 15.
Is it, so why are, just not saying one way or the other, that I have an opinion, but are we, are there people who want to, like, why are we upgrading the Falls Road? Is it just for that? And if so, can we just upgrade the first little bit of Falls Road? Or is there a reason to go all the way down?
So, when the weather gets nicer, I think we should take a site visit. Again, yeah, Seth is very familiar with it. Are you walking?
Yeah, I'm walking, and I, I'm, like I said, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but it's a lot of money, and I just didn't know if it's, like, we just want to do it, or if there is like structural or money or residents down there wanted it?
It's all of the above. So, right after Irene, we kind of also made promises to these people that they used to have a half a mile section of Class 3 road that went down and up another hill prior to Irene to access their properties. And now, we have bypassed them at least two and a half miles to go down Wheelerville Road to Bridge 15 and then up the Falls Road.
And it's not a great road.
Yeah, prior to Irene, that, that road was barely passable by Jeep, four-wheel-drive Jeep. And during, you know, aftermath of Irene, that, that with FEMA assistance was upgraded to the standard that it is now. And we've, at that time, there were a lot of cross-culverts replaced and put in, but there were two large culverts that were not replaced, maintained, or upgraded during that event. And since Irene, we've experienced at least two additional high-water events, some declared disasters, some not. But even the declared disaster, Rutland County did not meet the threshold for FEMA assistance, so we were not able to obtain any funds.
So, but the? Just to explain, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
To explain to you why we did that, was because of the overall cost and the time that it would take to fix what, the upper notch roads, the damage that was there, that we're talking about turning that into a trail. So, it's kind of switched, but that was the easiest, most practical way at that time.
So, with the $275,000, this is in the Highway Improvement Fund, and you, sort of sounds like that's kind of an earmark for this project.
Yes.
Is, so you, so Chris would determine, I mean, if, if it's worth, I mean, is it worth doing that smaller amount? Is there, Chris, is there something you can think of that would, that we should put out to bid on that or think about doing?
You could look at it, if, if you go by what was said to the people that live there, this is the only access point to and from their homes up there, there are some who live up there year-round. But we painted a corner, you gotta, somehow that would be brought up. I mean, we have signs that say we don't maintain it in the winter, but we can, because you couldn't get a truck up those roads. You have voted sand, we forget it. You could, short-term, take the money that's earmarked for the road, fix the culvert issue at the bottom of the road, knowing that you can't get the grant money for a structures that's on a legal trail, even though it's within the right-of-way of a Class 3. Eliminate that problem, and then work with, you know, whoever does the towns. You would need someone to go up there.
Engineering.
Yeah, an engineer in form to go up and say, if you have to, A, widen the road, it's fairly narrow, what, what do you have to do for the bank stabilization? What do you have to do for the shoulder stabilization? Can we, we can build up the road. We put 98 tons of gravel up there this past summer. We did the grading up there, we tried to fix a lot of the erosion that was up there. We did repair a culvert. But it's a narrow road, a lot of ledge, so you have a problem with ledge. So, short of holding off until you can do all the components, you could look at it as, this is affecting our Class 3 road, so we have 275, let's take in the 75 to 90,000 for the culvert. Or, you could say, how, it, it would be a discussion with, I'm, I'm not fully familiar with, with how far you have to go. For the state, say that a section would be considered Class, you know, upgraded to a Class 3. But even still, that first section is where you still have a grade of, you know, above 11%. So, you're going up at a good clip, and that's where the bank is sliding as well.
Is it at the top you're talking about with the bank sliding, up at the top of that grade, on the corner?
From the beginning to the top of the first hill, the whole thing. My predecessor, let me know, Bill Ellis, had talked about it, that there had been some ditch work by somebody else, tried to make it so water flowed a little better into the water, and then after they did the ditch work, is when they started noticing that the bank was sliding.
Yeah.
They were asked to stop, they stopped, but that hasn't stopped, they've seen it now shifting forward a little bit.
Someone's built up there, too.
There's, there's a lot of those.
Yeah.
So, I think ultimately, that was gonna be my question to you, Chris, too, was, like, doing the lower culvert there, right in McGlothlin Falls, how far in do we get, do we, would we be considered a Class 3 at that point for a section? And also, then back to you, Sarah, on the engineering, you said we talked with Dubai and King?
Yeah, we have, a few years ago, and, and he threw some numbers at how much the slide would cost to repair. That is really the most important thing to do, because it's threatening the road as it exists right now.
The what to repair?
The slide, like the embankment.
So, numbers, the overall numbers for completion, or just engineering numbers?
No, it was a cost estimate for repairs as well.
Okay. Then that would need to be engineered, correct?
Correct.
And?
Yeah.
But, did I hear you right, Chris, that you all could do the, that repair, or we would need for somebody else to do it?
No, that one's the biggest one.
Okay, all right.
They can do minor, they can do some ditching and maybe, maybe a culvert or two, I don't know what other culverts are up there, I haven't taken a full assessment. Yeah, that one's definitely, yeah.
So, I think, I really think that, you know, clearly, it's up here on our, our goals and objectives, but I think, I'm really, I mean, I think we're just a lot more familiar now with Sarah and I, you, you already were in the loop with that. But I think, I feel a lot, like I know a little bit more about this. And so, I think moving forward, we'll just work with Chris on what we're gonna do. And I think, yeah, that'd be a great project for Seth and Chris to work on together. Do we need more, do we need additional engineering work, since it's been five years? Or do we?
Yeah, and that was, that was just a, that was just a quote for how much the engineering and construction would cost, it wasn't the actual engineering. They did do some Neo surveys of the soils and the slide at that time, but that's not, you know, it would, it would need to be engineered.
Okay, okay, so that, that's gonna go, that'll stay on as a priority, and that'll be something that Chris and Seth can work on together.
I will say, just.
Yeah, go ahead.
My meeting with VTранs on Wednesday, I will ask them if they have a certain, if there is a length of a segment or two that it needs to reach, like notch road, it has a Class 2 and it has a Class 3, and that would be part of, it's gonna go to the Class 3, is the legal trail can part of Falls Road.
That'd be great if you could sign that out.
How long is the length of a segment to get?
Can you let Chris know?
Yeah, it's not gonna be the length that's required, but there are standards that we have to upgrade it to.
Which I get, I'm just saying how far.
How far down the road?
How far down the road, what we are talking about, doing a part, part of the road.
Is to build the road.
So, what Chris is saying is like, Sarah, for instance, if we fixed McGlothlin Falls, the culvert there, say we did that, like you were mentioning too, we have 275 set aside. If we were to do something like that, and then does it create, how far does it create a viable Class 3 road? And that might need work that we would be allowed to get grants on to fix that work that needs to be done still.
Yeah, so the process is, they're not gonna let you reclassify it till a 3, until you've upgraded the standards to a 3.
Right.
So?
So, that's base width, everything.
Yeah, so we're basically doing all of the, we have to do all of this out of pocket for the fact of possible future grants.
Correct.
To something that we've already fixed the whole time.
That you fixed once, yes. But it also makes it eligible for, it also makes it eligible for FEMA funding. So, if we have another disaster and the road washes out, we now? we now have an emergency bypass that we can upgrade for those people. We have to fix that road.
Yeah, absolutely.
So for emergency planning, too, they don't pay for legal trails. Um, the reason why we got that FEMA to pay for it during Irene was we had to do emergency evacuations out of there during the storm. So that is when Matt went in there, Matt Town. Um, and we did those upgrades to um, you know, and then they let us finish them off so that there was a continued access to their property. But it was done during the emergency response part of the program, not for permanent repairs. So these are all, I mean, these are all discussions that we're not gonna be able to hash out at this meeting. But it does lay the coursework that you know what's going on there and that there's multiple pieces and parts for us to decide and then present back to the Select Board with um, our recommendation of what should be done.
Yeah, and I think Chris, Chris having this meeting with V-Trans on Wednesday is fortuitous for us. So you can get some information so we can continue on with that.
Maybe can you think, do you think you can make it back to the next meeting, Chris? If, you know, just come in and inform us at that time.
Okay.
That might be the easiest.
And.
It's fresh on your mind?
It's fresh, yeah, you know.
Yeah, and if you don't wanna come, if you don't, if you don't wanna come in physically, you could come in.
Yeah, I mean, either on a.
I would just.
On a.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Sometimes it's just easier to do that than via email.
Okay, so there, and so in addition to that, there's a few more things that apply to Chris for today's meeting that we might need to circle back at the next meeting as well. So um, Woodward Road, Pond Road, and Journeys End Dry Hydrant Grants. Um. That's something that I've asked again, Chris and Seth to work on getting the information we need to do that to do, to post that RFP, right? Sarah?
Yes, ultimately, yes.
Okay.
With the technical assistance from um, Bill Lovett from the Fire Department.
Yeah.
Troy Dare from the um, Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force.
So that's something you guys are, okay.
Have you spoken with Troy or?
I've spoken with Bill. Yeah, I've spoken with, uh, I've been in doubt of planning commission.
Troy or Bill, okay.
Bill, uh, Troy I've emailed with because uh, so trying to, I'm trying to immerse myself in all things dry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and learning because I, I, my questions, first it was an introductory meeting, um, Bill Lovett, I had met as AMD for Middle Town Spring, so I've seen him in doubt at the, the planning commission, we do the local emergency management meetings, um, but sitting down because one of the, one of the forms that Troy had sent one of his emails was like this schematic of a, a dry hydrant done in Newport. And so my question was, are they standardized? You know, is it always, again, that one, it was 8-inch Schedule 40 PVC, right, that they ran into a body of water? Doesn't really say what the body of water was, but it just shows, it's just a schematic of what it is. And I wanna know, do they ever need pumps to like help get the water based on distance? Um, you know, depending on grade, because it's supposed to be a fairly level thing because part of the difficulty in, you know, you reached out to me, uh, I got it late, tried to reach back, doesn't interact or work, whatever. But like for the Journeys End one, that's a long run. And where it's at, yeah, it goes uphill. So, but if you move it left or right, you're on someone's front lawn or in the middle of there. That's tough, you know, I was trying to get perspective on what does it look like? Um, so that when we did sit down, we'd say, okay, so when you did it up by Vista, this is how it went, this is the size pipe, and this is, these are the components, but what's the grade? Is there something that has to be done when it comes to, you know, the, the recommendation on pond, pond route on when?
Pond Road, yes.
Is that sediment is in there? And so that sounds to me like dredging. So if you're dredging in a, in a, in a water, what does that look like? I reached out to the bottom from ANR because there'll be permits that'll have to be pulled.
We'll talk to, we'll talk to Bill on that one because um, a lot of times, I mean, sentiments want to, yeah, I mean, you don't, you can't immerse a pipe in a bunch of sediment, obviously, when you're putting in new construction, but but as far, they do settle over anyways and they run reverse pump. They blow back out, blow it out, and then they start sucking to fill their trucks, so. And there's, there's a lot of things that I know about. I mean, you change to Schedule 80 PVC at the turns where it comes up and hooks to the pumps and I mean, there, I think there's a pretty basic, I haven't done one in a while, but there's a pretty basic code to follow by which we should basically, we just get that from Troy. I believe, I believe that's, where did our plans come from, from on the one that I did, Sarah? The, the specs, that came from Troy.
Right, so, and I was talking to Chris about this today, is um, as soon as I submit the grant application for um, for each one of the projects, he, he's then authorized to give us technical information for each location. So.
How do we do the RFP if we don't have the technical information?
So that comes after we get the technical information. So we first have to submit the grant application. And that authorizes, that authorizes Troy to work on the technical aspects of the project. He'll give, he'll give his information and then we as a town, and and Bill Lovett will give his information on what connections to the fire equipment they need. And then we will, a- as a town, we'll write the RFP to go out to bid.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I was getting confused with the grant application and RFP. I just I heard one said the other. Okay, we gotta get the grid up. Well, that sounds like a great.
You know, we can move forward on the project at the same time. Um, because there, we need to come up with the list of questions for Troy on what information we need from him.
And this is sort of something we.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So it sounds like these guys are gonna take it from here. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Um. The um, grant, under grants, Sarah, you have uh, grants and aid FY25 awarded construction pending. Is that Journeys End?
So we have been awarded funding for a grants and aid project. Chris has met with um, it was Ashley Andrews to um, create a um, or to let her know what segment that we'll be working on this summer. And so that is, it's pending construction for this summer. And that is a project that, that our road crew will do.
Okay.
Where's that one?
Where is it?
Journeys End.
The location will end up being Wheelerville.
Oh.
Oh, Wheelerville, yeah, Journeys End's the next one. So this is more work on Wheelerville?
Yep.
White Road.
So.
You're gonna get used to it.
We're, we're, we're gonna be hearing about a lot of this, whether it's Wheelerville, Journeys End will be one that gets talked about a lot this summer. But um, there are let's just say there's 247 segments that need to be upgraded, right?
Two, 247?
247.
240 segments.
Right, that don't meet the MRGB standards.
Okay. Inmended currently.
The state's plan is that by 2036, all towns will be in Class.
2036, okay.
Yes, that is the state's plan. This past summer, Fane and I, our first summer, we did 11 segments, brought them up to the state. The state anticipates that you can do about five or six. But we did 11 miles of ditching. We replaced a couple of culverts, we stone lined, we put in um, erosion measures to stop the real erosion that water was cutting through and leaving gouges. So we lined it with stone and created a stone pond to break up the water to disperse the energy. So it didn't happen. Those segments were all updated, uh, with the state and photos were submitted. And that was all good. He's about the, the grants and aid for fiscal year 25.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Ashley and I, when I had met with her, we sent the, the letter of intent and we were setting up what it was gonna be. Uh, when we looked at the highlighted segments within town, the Wheelerville section that is connected to Rutland City's watershed had uh, three areas of concern. Two were in the, the high level and one was moderately out of the range for where it should be. So we put those into the Better Roads group. Right, filled out for the Better Roads, those are the three segments getting hit. The grants and aid is a fourth connected segment to get, just, we're just gonna take one stretch of road for excuse me, 15,000 feet and correct. And that, I'll be working with Tom from Rutland City, he's in charge of the water. I'll be working with the planning commission, um, because they will be in assistance. And but the mandate will take that, you know, we're gonna put in seven culverts. It's a whole bunch of them, dishes. Um, it was a it was a significant project. It's a project we can do.
Yeah.
The reason for bringing Rutland City in is that's the watershed, so everything we do, digging in the dirt.
It'll make it easier to work with them.
So, you know, Tom's a good guy, been working with him for a little bit now. Uh.
What's the case for those culverts?
The grant.
The grant will cover them?
The grant will cover, you're supposed to give, uh, you know, itemized list of what you're putting in and the cost. So, you know, when you take your gravel, how much gravel do you think you're gonna put down?
Mm-hmm.
And you know, estimate a little higher, but you know, because you're gonna redo that whole road with gravel. Your ditch lines, you put in the stones, the stoner you're using, that's a big thing, stone is based on grade, right, so the pitch of the road. These have to be relatively flat segments. It's kinda nice.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's also something where a three-man crew, all three people can work and you don't have to have two people flagging all the time. Right, so one guy works while two guys stay. That's a rough. Um. Things like that, uh, but it was all put in, I can, I can present you with, with what I had submitted to there. It's about a $30,000 project with a $20,000 right now.
Did you get, has the grant been awarded yet? Sarah, do we know if that grant's been?
Uh, yeah, so um, from last summer or for this upcoming summer?
For the work that he's talking about now.
The work going forward, we have the fiscal year 25 grant that has been awarded. And then we'll be also submitting a letter of intent for the fiscal year 26.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, you guys. I warned you.
Those grants um, range anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, and then the last thing that I think involves Chris is Journeys End and that's, really doesn't involve Chris because someone else does that work, right?
Hmm, so uh, last week, I brought two companies up individually to walk that
Oh.
property, well, that stretch of road, take a look at it because they couldn't make today's meeting. Today we had five show up that walked that, that job.
Really?
Finished, went through what needs to happen. Uh, a request that I would make of the Select Board is um, I have written down on 11 different occasions when I've called Consolidated and I've gone to them physically to their building. Um, they have not moved their data line from the old pole that was existing to the new pole, like remount power foot in.
Okay.
That pole has to be moved for them to be, for whoever gets the bid to remove a section of that bank to improve the road.
Where is that?
It's on Journeys End.
On Journeys End, yeah.
So Sarah, is there any, anything we can do?
There is something that you can do. So we can go to the Public Service Board.
Okay.
State and um, you know, explain to them that they, that they're non-responsive and they'll follow up. I, I hope I'm labeling them correctly, but it's the.
PSB, yeah, the Public Service Board.
The Public Service Board. Um, they have a little bit more teeth. They'll contact Consolidated and make them get in touch with us.
Yeah, I've. Yeah.
That is imperative because that pole has to move before we can do construction and our construction has to be completed by the end of June. So we're, we're at, uh, come remove your stuff.
So at the, so how do we move forward to get in touch with the Public Service Board?
Um, we just have to look, contact information, yeah.
But I mean, is that a letter that we write or or do a phone call we make or?
I think I can start with a phone call. Um, you can authorize tonight on behalf of the Select Board that um, if we need to write a letter, that a letter will be written immediately.
Okay, so why don't we, so, so why don't I make a motion that we authorize you to reach out to the Public Service Board first by phone and then follow up with a letter requesting that pole be removed from uh, Journeys End?
Just, just the wire.
It's just the wire, right?
Just the wire.
Remount power.
The poles are already there, the new poles are there, so they just need to move, so.
So we need you to, um, so we need to ask them to have the wire moved. So I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize you to make that communication for us.
I'm gonna second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, well, I had my first trip down Journeys End the other day and I'm in a long time and on my tour of the town that I took over the weekend. And um, yeah, that road's, that's a, that's a busy road. Lot of people live down there and so I don't, I think they'll be very happy to have that work done.
New homes at the very end.
Yeah. Okay.
So there was a few more things.
Oh.
So you've got, uh.
Complete streets, notch road.
Yeah, so that is um, that's, that goes right along with the project of paving notch road or reclaiming and paving notch road that we have to make sure that we're following the complete, the Complete Streets guidelines, which um, essentially uh, constructs the road for all users of all abilities. Um. So we just have to make sure that we're following those guidelines. Um, and then it all kinda goes in together. So the Class 2 roadway grant will be applied for, for resurfacing. Um, the notch road, um, paving bids will be going out for paving bids um, soon order to um, get some bids in on how much it's gonna cost. And um, yeah, so there's like three different things that we are doing on the notch. There is a culvert that washed out during the storms of 2023 that we put temporary repairs on and that will consider permanent repairs. Um, applying for the Structures Grant for that um, grant replacement. Um, but this is also conversations that um, Chris is having with V-Trans on Wednesday.
Is that somewhere just below South Mendon Road?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I guess most of our goals and objectives involve Chris.
Hmm, there's a lot, there is, a lot of stuff.
That one pretty much gets, I know, be another thing. So that's all for Chris for tonight, I hope.
Come on, Chris, get busy now.
Let's see, Chris, unless, unless you'd like to say work on the town policies with us.
What else you got?
Uh, there's also the passive grant that's being written that's for safety equipment and whatnot. Trying to get um, mentioned before, a couple of towns specifically, Castleton utilized part of that grant to get some uh, rolled edge plows, some of the roads start getting soft, you have snow coming down.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't bite in.
Okay, that's new to me.
So they don't, they don't dig. They've had success. I went over with Jeff Davidson, he's the road foreman over there. He let me use one of his trucks and rode with me. It on a muddy road that, or you know, thawing road that has snow on it. on a muddy road that, or you know, thawing road that has snow on it. It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, kinda grades it out at the same time.
So is that, sorry?
Without being aggressive.
So without the risk, uh, it falls under a passive grant because VLCT likes it because there's less likelihood that the blade of a regular plow, when it's going, especially in our transition zones where we go from paved to dirt, will bite in and then that's when you see the pictures of the plows underneath the truck.
Mm hmm.
And, you know, drivers getting hurt. Um, but the, the primary piece of uh safety equipment that we're really looking at with that grant is uh, a ditch box.
Trench box.
A trench box, yes, sorry. Uh, we don't have them. Um, Vosha requires that anytime you're working in destabilized they're, we're digging it up, that you have one.
Um, can I make a suggestion on that? And Sarah, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but are we able to purchase something that's not brand new?
Yes.
We need to, okay, because we can find trench boxes that, I can find us trench boxes that are not you, that are not new, that are perfectly safe.
Sure.
And uh
Going in the dirt.
So is this
Hold the dirt back.
Is this anything we need as, to spend this money? Is this anything we need to get involved in for what this equipment that Chris is talking about?
No, not at all.
Okay, I'm gonna hold him up.
Yeah, it would be in our equipment replacement schedule for any matching funds. The VLCT grant, if he gets it paid for, is fifty percent of the cost. So that is just something that we'll work on uh folding into the equipment replacement schedule.
Is this something, and I don't, I'm, I'm just bringing this up. Um, you know, we're talking about sharing equipment with other towns. Is this something that might be shareable or is this something everybody would need at the same time? So it would be stupid to try to share it.
It, it depends on the cost. It's not a huge um, it's not a huge cost piece of equipment.
Okay.
I can't remember at you right now, but um, essentially, we would just be looking for a couple quotes on where we could get one and for how much. So it just might not be necessary to share the equipment. Um, the construction season is kinda short, so everybody may be trying to use it at the same time.
Okay. All right, I just think we always wanna have that in our mind when we're talking about buying things and spending money. Um, I think that's new to all of us in the state, but I, in the county, but I think it's important to keep front of mind. Um, the other thing, just, I had a conversation with Chris uh about the amount of needles that they're finding up on the road, up in the town. And Chris has some gloves that he's able to pick up the needles with that are sa- a safety glove from a previous employment. And I asked him to get, even though he doesn't want the other two guys dealing with needles, there just may be a time they have to. And so I'd asked him to pick up a couple pair of those gloves for the other two members of the road crew.
They've been ordered.
They've been ordered, so he's ordered those.
And is there some sort of disposal?
Yeah.
Container that should be in all trucks or something like that, or, I mean, just think.
Right now, what we do, what I do, is the Ruffin Hospital used to take them from me in a jar.
Okay.
Uh, supposed to take a jar, put the water in it, put the needles in, and then on, you take it, they take it along and do it. So I go down to the Sheriff's Department with my jar of water needles and hand it to them. Um.
Is it a specific jar or you just use jar? Okay.
As long as it's in a sealed container that, you know, is impervious.
Yeah.
So the needles don't stick in through.
Okay.
Uh, that's what we do right now, what I do. Uh, we all look for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a pair of search gloves that were stick through, so I would just collect them. But we're at two oh seven as of last week for the time since I started.
Where, are there sites that are primarily?
There's the end of the notch road where the large parking lot is.
Yeah.
Uh.
I'm here in the ball field, it's starting to
The backside of the ball field where you have the outfield fence. Typically walk that, uh, not in winter, but in the summer I was walking it.
Yeah.
Walking behind, you know, cause we mow that, so I would
Oh, okay.
Point, you know, weekly, I would go through there. Uh, but you have the falls road, or not falls road, sorry, you have the end of notch road right there. Brewer's Corner is picking up. And then we also had, you know, a couple instances where some tents were popping up. And when you see tents, you were finding some other, you know. But, you know, during greenup day last year, when we were going through picking up the bags and picking up the size of the load, it was the six hundred dollars worth of terminals, and it's all twisted tee, IPAs, I mean, it's the ultimate hobby. Yeah, so if you're trying to make a dollar, there's plenty of them.
Get out there, pick them up.
My Girl Scouts used to do that and we'd get the money and
Yeah.
Buy stuff.
Yeah.
So while Chris is here too, Sarah, Sarah, somebody had mentioned something about the trees on the edge of the ball field, uh, on the entrance way there off the road.
Oh, yeah, town meeting.
Is it something I should bring up now or should we wait till the next board meeting?
Well, I discussed it with Chris earlier today and so
Okay.
It's part of spring cleanup, he'll cut those um bushes and kinda manicure them a little bit better than they are now. Before it leaves. Yeah, before it leaves out.
Great.
All right, so Chris, thank you.
You're free.
Free.
Free to go.
Thank you for coming.
For now.
You're not free. And uh, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you and uh, just, yeah, if you can, the next select board meeting, maybe try to get what you can together and tune in here and
I will be here.
As far as myself, you know, just
I'll, I'll fire you.
I know you were busy, so.
And we'll put you on the front of the agenda so you don't have to listen to everything else.
Hmm.
Okay.
Like uh duties and obligations for the tree warding thing.
Oh. Oh, silly, no.
I do, I do.
We'll get that for you.
Yeah.
You made walks, you identify trees, people come, they contribute.
We have an app that you can identify trees.
You're supposed to take an apple with you too, in a paper bag.
All right, we'll get that to you. And congratulations on your appointment.
Yes.
Also, I sit on, I don't know what the, of the Semper Commission as well. I don't know how that goes, but I'm in.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause we maintain that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we dig it now. So
Okay.
Might as well be a face.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations on that as well.
However that works.
Okay.
Cause I know it was out for comment, are you willing to still do, not do, or whatever? But we maintain them, so we should be satisfied with it.
All right.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for that, thank.
Okay, now Tara, other, Sarah Buxton.
Oh, policies.
Oh, oh, wait, fir- first of all, the appraisal, reappraisal order. Um, you know, one of the things, Sarah, after you and I talked about this the other day, do you think we um might need to expand our um BCA over the next couple elections so that we have more people once that happens?
Um, I don't think you can expand the BCA. So those are set, those are set positions, but it does require an active BCA for every member to be involved with the uh reappraisal, because as you uh create the subcommittees for site visits, you know, if only five members of the BCA are active in the reappraisal, it's very time consuming for a small group of people versus a large group of people. And so APs are part of the BCA and they were just re-elected or elected um in November, so they have a two-year term. And that means that in February, when they take office, I think it's February, um, going into that summer is probably gonna be the summer that we um, that we have appeals.
Okay, I'm one of them, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, that, so what do we think the timeline is? By the time we get an RFP out and there's only a couple people that do that work, right?
We, yep, the RFP should go out some, at some point this summer. And um, and we would go under contract by the end of the summer. And they're booking two years out.
Yeah.
So um, so we're, we're potentially looking at the grand list of two thousand twenty seven. Um, which would be the uh summer of twenty twenty seven would be uh, an appeal period and that will take most of the summer. It could
So we need to really be sure we have an active BCA by then.
Yeah, active and trained, yep. Um, and then, and then it, it could be pushed off a year to twenty twenty eight as well, depending on the scheduling of um reappraisal companies, which must be certified. There's a short list of them approved by the state of Vermont um that can do reappraisals. So we will be looking into um, you know, sending that out to bid to all of those companies. And um seeing where we fall in a reappraisal. Um, the state updated the requirements on reappraisals. And they now require you to do a reappraisal every six years unless your CLA and COD fall out of compliance. And then they're gonna dictate that you do it sooner than that.
And we fell out of compliance, right? Because of Gateway, one condo at Gateway or something?
Yeah, pretty much, it was our condos that threw us out of compliance with our COD.
But it's gonna end up being six years pretty much anyway by the time we get to this.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, okay. All right, so um, the town policies, Sarah Buxton is
No, it'll be like three years.
Three years, yeah, so that'll be, but that will have been, cause it's been three years since we did it, right?
Oh, yes, correct.
So it's in those three more years, so it would be our six-year time anyway. And then we're, then we're good for six years unless we fall out of compliance. Okay, all right, so town policies, Sarah Buxton.
Yeah, so um, Sarah totally may wanna take the lead on some of these. We've, we've talked about a few of these and I've got um some direction from the staff on what they'd like help working with and the ones that we have were um updating or creating, I think for the first time, the surveillance policy, video surveillance policy.
Yes.
Other towns have that one.
Yes.
Is that in here?
I don't see that in here, Sarah.
For the new one, that might be um uh Joy and Jesse prepared a um policy look at adopting. Um.
Oh, yep, that other list, yep.
Yeah. Oh. Yep, you got it.
Yep, the video surveillance. So um even more than my list with the goals and objectives, we have the looking at adopting policies or re-adopting or ones we already have that need updating. So we'll really be working off this list and incorporating the policies that um, Chris has been working on at the garage in response to his um, his uh meetings and updates with Vosha and our insurance company VLCT Passive on what policies should be placed, be in place at the garage as well. So I do know that Chris has already updated um, which are listed on here, the um walkout, tagout, the community hazardous communications and the personal protective equipment policy. And so that already meets VLCT and Vosha standards, so that would just require adoption by the select board.
So are those, I'm sorry, are you looking at the policy, the list we got from Joy and Jesse or what's in this? Our, our uh goals?
That one, that's on my goals and objectives. And so uh Jesse and Joy created the other policy. I'll be putting some input into that and updating our list of things to do.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, some really basic things that I really would like to see. And hopefully we won't be hiring anybody in the near future, but I would love to see our interviewing questions updated somehow. Um, our reviews, our, our reviews, evaluations before we do them in July. And um, also, the um, there was something else that we oh, and the, and it's here, the personnel policy and rules handbook.
Yeah. So if we get those ones done by, say, the end of June, those three, would that be?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Um, I think one of the things to just kind of I can't know what I've told Sarah and what I've told you guys. One of the things that I'm really hoping to concentrate on, like you doing policies, that sort of thing. Seth with the road and then I'm really trying to work with the staff and I've, I've asked, um, I'm gonna be meeting with Sarah and Jesse and Chris every, the Thursday before select board meeting.
Yeah.
So I meet with Sarah then to work on the um, the agenda and ha- meet with them so that we can really get ahold of what's going on. And communication and, you know, right now I just feel like everything is sort of, you know, everything's kind of in separate silos. And so I really wanna bring, and because I don't work and I am available during the day to walk over here, I, that's something I'm, I'm, and so a lot of this stuff might come with that as well, that you're working on. So I just wanted to say that.
And if you have, if you have stuff there, I know goals are three, that's what you know, like what the priorities are. The other ones that um, I already have dropped of are the animal control
Oh, yeah.
Updates, and so I talked to Rod, I'll coordinate with him, send that in the mail, we'll come at some point with a, an updated one.
Yeah.
Um, Jesse already sent around, or at least she shared with me the record retention policy. She worked with the Secretary of State's office, which is the right place to, to work. Um, I'd like, it would be my preference that that be um either ready to be adopted or um adopted before we do this joint training, because one, I think, one important thing that we should all be on the same page about is you can't destroy any record until you have a record retention policy. I mean, there are some exceptions, but being able to know that, you know, you should go through your emails every, you know, certain period of time according to what the Secretary of State's office has authorized and clean out things will make it a lot easier for Jesse to be able to respond to, you know, public records requests and things like that, so. Um, so that's the other one I think we should make sure is kind of on the earlier side of the year. And Sarah, oh, um, I think um, Megan, you had, you had mentioned at one point, um, or maybe Sarah, no, Sarah had mentioned, looking through the policies and everything that has a fee, this includes maybe coordinating with the planning commission, just putting everything into one fee schedule, so it would be the animal control, you know, all the fees having to do with uh everything from licensing to
Yeah.
You know, penalties and such. And having that all be in one schedule that we sort of annually look at and adopt. It might even be what the charges are for making photocopies.
Yeah.
Records, there's some statutory fees that we really don't have a lot of control over, but having it in one place.
And it did, and
Yeah.
Sarah, and in addition to that, um, we had talked about starting doing some charging for um public records.
Yeah, so we should adopt and that would be part of it. Absent the adoption of a fee schedule, um, you default to the prices of like seventeen or thirty-three cents a minute that the Secretary of State has authorized in their uniform schedule. But other towns are adopting things like, you know, a dollar a minute, two dollars a minute, you know, some standardized fees. And until we do that, then, you know, we've, we're, they're really outdated in terms of what the actual cost of staff time is for those things.
Yeah, and I think with the amount of staff, you know, the budget for zoning um that is going to public records requests, I think it's important that we get that into our policies. Because that's money that's being spent.
Yep. So uh the other one that I'll, I think it's worth looking at at least once a year um is the sexual harassment policy, just as a good measure for employers to make sure that it's up to date and that employees are all aware who need, you know, who need to report any complaint to. I, I think it's Sarah is the complaint, but then, you know, if something is against Sarah, who would you? I don't know if we've updated it to say like Megan or Jesse, you know, something like that, but we'll just, uh, I said we'd kind of look at those and that's probably part of the personnel handbook as well.
Correct.
So those are the top ones, the, many of these others I think are, are really um The, many of these others, I think, are, are really um standard policies that VLCT either has model ordinances for, or the Clerks Association, or the Treasurers Association.
So, yeah, I think this is gonna be, and I think it'd be great to have, you know, again, as we adopt these, as we come up with them, working on them at those meetings with Jesse and, you know, as a, as appropriate, that we work, you know, we get their input as we're putting together some of this, uh, some of this, Sarah yours and Jesse and Chris's input, because you guys are, you know-
Belonged to.
Yeah, I mean, Chris is, you know, we're gonna be doing evaluations, and we want your input too. And as far as the employee handbook goes, so I think that's something we can definitely work on in those meetings, if need be.
And um VLCT does have draft policies on all of this stuff, so I, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel at all. Um, there are a couple policies that are newer.
Yeah.
But I still think that there are draft policies out there that we're not, we're not creating new from square one.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think this is gonna be a big relief when we get this all done, and I think it's great to have Sarah's expertise on these subjects, because it's way out of my wheelhouse. Um, I think Seth's, Seth's in agreement with me on that, so um-
Just don't put me behind a grader, I don't know.
Yeah, I could do it.
So um, the, the other thing, and I don't know where it is, Sarah, but something else you and I talked about, I do have a meeting with Leamy tomorrow to talk about the list of things that we discussed that um, for me to go over with him, and I have them here somewhere, I looked at them today, but is there anything, I don't know, I don't see them. Hmm. Sorry. So we, basically, I was touching days with him on, I don't have it.
Well, it's essentially the public safety budget and management of the um Rutland County Sheriff contract, the fire department contract, um, the public safety budget, which would be the use of the car, the cruiser in the car. Um, I am looking it up right now, Megan.
Yeah, I've got, I've got all the notes, like three pages of notes from our meeting the other day, and I'm just, um, journeys in a natro, dry hydrants, that was the office stuff I had to do for the meeting. Seth and Chris, Sarah, so, uh, oh, here it is, Leamy, fire call sheets. So um, we, it was brought up at town meeting about, you know, what money we collect, and and I don't know if um the sheriff's office knows anything about this, so we get fire call sheets, correct? And they go to him, they go to Leamy?
They go to Leamy, yes.
Yeah, and so, the fire department. So we, we, I don't have any idea how much we're getting charged for, and um, it might be worth trying to collect some of that.
Yeah, so I think so. I mean, so basically, or what you're saying is, call goes out, Rutland responds, some piece of, some document goes to the town, but not us.
Right, to our-
And so, at least knowing how many false alarms.
Yeah.
But how many um calls, you know, we're getting on a regular basis.
And something that for the last couple of years, we haven't done anything on, uh, Sarah explained to me that at one point Rich Carlson had a small business, he and another gentleman, and I did call Rich and talk to him about that. Um, you know, and he, he said he wasn't trying to be, make a statement.
Yeah.
He just wondered if we, so I think it's worth talking to Leamy about.
Yeah.
Um, as, you know, as the office staff gets up and, you know, we get caught up and things here are more smoothed over, you know, as we've had kind of a rough year, um, maybe, you know, Joy could help, you know, get some, you know, try to bill some people. I mean, I don't think we want to, you know, go to a small claims court necessarily or anything, but at least-
So, and it's, and it's related to the violations of our ordinances. So we have a burn permit ordinance that requires a written permit. If someone burns without a permit and the fire department responds, um, that is an, that is an absolute pass on the cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars for that call for the negligent party that burnt without a permit. Um, same thing with false alarms. Uh, false alarms meaning a malfunction of your alarm system in your home.
Yeah.
That creates, so you might have a smoke alarm, you might have a burglary alarm and a low temperature alarm. You want to make sure that the burglary alarm and the, you know, uh, the low temperature alarm isn't calling out the fire department, you're calling your plumber or the state police. Um, so it's making sure that those alarm systems are um maintained properly, because there's a couple properties in town that also are repetitive. So that would be enforcing our ordinance fines that we have already, and if they're not adopted in a way that we can collect on the fines, then we need to look at re-adopting them in a different way in order to enforce them. Yeah, in order to enforce appropriately.
Sarah's, um, Sarah is volunteering to get involved in that. I think it's, you know, I, I think it's important that we show some effort to doing this.
Yeah, if we go through the effort of passing rules and regulations, we should enforce them.
Yeah.
And make them meaningful, but if you're, and actually, the conversation is important, especially as we think about, you know, zoning and things that are gonna come the next year, we really have to make sure that if we do say something is against the rules, that we have the resources here, whether it's staff time to chase it down, or it's, you know, and um staff to go out and to, to look at violations.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we really should think very, you know-
Well, and I'll-
-careful about whether we can enforce them.
So those are the three existing, the fireworks ordinance, the burn permit ordinance, and the false alarm ordinance are all the ordinances that we could collect fines on or reimbursement of those first responder calls of the fire department passing them on to us. The other hard ones are accidents on Route Four that the fire department responds to. Um, and more importantly, long-term accidents that the fire department responds to, because if it's a hazardous material spill, then that's considered a long-term accident under our contract with Rutland City Fire Department, and we're billed actual costs. We're not billed seven hundred and fifty dollars, we're billed actual-
Sir, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Now that we, that, now that I've learned and gone through this whole Route Four scoping and how we're not allowed to do this, and we're not allowed to do that, and it's a state road, why isn't the state responsible for that repayment?
Yeah, I, I mean, it happens within the town of Mendon, and we, we, we respond to um those long-term accidents or hazardous spills, and um, it, it's a question for V-Trans, really.
It seems like, it seems like we could, it, it, those would be ones we go after their insurance company for. We're more likely to get payment out of an insurance company than we would out of a person, and so those-
And that's correct. And, and so the communication between the responding agencies, the fire department doesn't always get insurance information. Um, the police and the Rutland County Sheriff, if they respond, they get, they get contact information for the responsible parties, but um that might be slow information coming to us. It could be a couple months before we get that information. They have to complete their reports, and so it has been a struggle, and it has been for years, on coordinating a system that um efficiently allows us to build, bill appropriately.
Well, and I think one of the things, it's nice that we have such consistency in our sheriff here in town, um, you know, that possibly, you know, bring him into this conversation too. Um, I, I think it would be great if we could make some effort on this this year, and I think Joy would be perfect for this job, collecting.
And there are, you know, we can collect, and then we can go to the judicial part, you know, bureau. There's, you know, for fines under eight hundred dollars, we can go there, for fines that accrue, and there are more than that, you know, we'll bring them to criminal court. But those, those are conversations I think we would have and say, are we prepared to take those steps? But um, but, you know, I've helped towns do that before.
And I think, you know, what went on up in Killington with all that burning and, you know, something like that starts happening in our town. Seth's gonna be busy.
Yeah, so it was a year that we had a number of forest fires in Mendon, or in a very short period of time, like five years, we had like three major brush fires.
Underground, burning underground or something.
Yeah, it really did prompt us to create the burn permit ordinance to begin with, because the fine at the time, I don't, and I don't think it's changed, for burning without a permit was twenty-five dollars in state statute.
Right, for the state.
Well, this is, I think this is all, I, I really hope, I really, you know, I actually called Rich and talked to him, and he said, I wasn't trying to point fingers, I wasn't anything, I was just curious, and I said, well, thank you. So um, I think that's a great thing to work on. And our, and Seth being our fire, what are you?
Wardling.
Fire warden. He, he could be part of this project too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, um-
So back to your discussion with Leamy, did you have anything else to? Do you have the-
Vehicle, the vehicle, talked to him about the vehicle.
Yeah.
Um, and change, what does it say? Change Municipal Ticket Judicial Bureau? I just wrote that.
It, it's the enforcement, we either, we issue a municipal ticket or we enforce it by sending it to the judicial bureau. Um, that, it's all looking at our ordinances, and like Sarah said, she can look at this and see how, where, where is the enforcement of um, of the ordinances? And if they're adopted correctly, to go to the right place.
And is there anything else um I need to talk to him about?
So, did, were you looking at the list that we discussed and then I emailed to you?
Um, I'm actually just, I'm looking at, I, you know what, that's why, I knew there was something I read, it's what you emailed me, because I'm like, I only have these three things written down. I do have that email, so I will, I'll use that for my meeting with him tomorrow.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, yeah, I knew I had seen it.
Back to the select board on, you know, what Leamy's doing, or maybe he can attend a future meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's great, I agree, because he's in a two-year appointment, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. Last year, he's in the middle of a two-year appointment.
Yeah, since I've been here.
He's also, this is the time of year that he's updating the local emergency management plan as our Director of Public Safety. So um, that will come to you for adoption before May first is the deadline.
Okay. Okay, so um, the other things on this list, because we're getting into almost two hours, I'd like to have this meeting done by two hours, just for sanity's sake. Um, town office projects, um, Sarah um brought me up to speed on the um removal of central air conditioning. I think that's something, if you could recap that quickly for these guys, Seth might know.
Just quickly, um, the air conditioning, that you see all the little vents that are in the conference room right now, the circle vent. Um, this really has not functioned properly since the construction of the building. Um, uh, we, we've received different advice over the years from needing to insulate the pipes more, the vents in the attic to prevent condensation, but really what the issue is, is condensation builds up into the vents, and then it, once you turn it on, or it builds up so much that it starts leaking out through the vents. So, um, and it's, it has been a problem. Um, it might be because we don't utilize the air conditioning all that often. The, the town office stays pretty cool anyways, even in the summer, when it's tucked up behind the mountain so much and the, and the building is insulated, that um it doesn't really get too hot in there until about three o'clock in the afternoon when the sun, the western sun is beating on the building. So, um, regardless, since then, we've installed the two um heat pumps in the front of the building and the rear of the building, which is providing air conditioning and, you know, heating and cooling, that at this point, um, we can follow up with um additional contractors to repair the HVAC system, otherwise it should just be removed from the building. Right now, um, you know, potentially warm air gets up into the vents, condensates, and could be building mold, mildew, you know, other, um-
And didn't you say there's a compressor out back that's old, that's probably twenty years old, and we should probably-
Yeah, it's twenty years old, yeah.
Sell it for scrap, maybe.
So, I mean, if they suggest that we rip it out, um, and remove the um, the air conditioning unit, all of the vents would need to be plugged in the ceilings of the town office.
Who built this? Who was the contractor?
Nailor. Yeah, nailer and breen.
But they have never accepted any responsibility for the fact that it didn't work?
Correct.
So we probably wouldn't call them to fix it?
No.
After twenty years of-
No, I mean, they, we, we had a beautiful building. What happened was it took a number of years for us to figure out what was going on. You know, it didn't all of a sudden be a problem on day one. Um, it took a while for that buildup of condens, condensation to start leaking through the vents. Um, and when it leaks through the vents, then it started um ruining the ceiling drywall. So that's been repaired a number of times. Um, some of the vents, not all the vents leak, only some of them do, so you really see it out in the clerk's office section of the building.
So Sarah, are the heat pumps working proper, or are working well?
Yes.
To do the job?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I'm gonna propose that we, since next, our next meeting, we do the rest of these, it's not many, um, but discussing the reserve funds, the medical cards, and the rest of the town office projects, uh, that we moved, I just think we should put those on next um meeting, um, just because it's-
I stuck a nap.
I'm, you know, I'm, we have other business to tend to, and I'm getting a little cross-eyed with all this, and um, I think that we've, the other, the only thing I would like to do tonight is set a date for the training so that we can work towards that. And if we have a date, we'll do the work. So we talked about having the meeting, having a, uh, have it recorded, and have it be, have a, you know, a PowerPoint, um, that have as many people here from all the commissions as well as the VCA, and those that aren't here to make a way for them to use the recording to do it.
A handout.
Um, so it's gonna require us to put it together, the training together, but I don't think that's gonna be that complicated, because we have everything.
I have some trainings, the material that I train on.
Yeah, so, let's look, and we're thinking we want to do that on a weeknight, correct, Sarah? Um, did we think we wanted to do that not on a select board or a zoning meeting, or did we want to try to have it on the nights that some people might already have to be here?
Um, that, I'd like to see feedback from Sarah on that, as far as the planning commission, and already the um, the zoning working group, working on the zoning, um, the first draft of the zoning rewrite, um, on whether they would be able to have two meetings.
That's coming, that'll be transitioning very, very soon. Um, are you thinking April, May?
I'm thinking, I'm hoping by June first.
Okay. So what if um- Okay. So, what if, um, I don't, I mean, I, I think it won't be a problem, because we could also, just with the planning, I, what I suspect, tomorrow, the planning commission's meeting, and I think there will be a, a conversation about what our work's going to look like over the next several months. And I can report to them that we proposed a date, maybe haven't finalized it, but would like to know if we can work that date into their schedule.
Yeah, we can have it be on one of their meeting days.
Yeah.
Because it would just be Seth and me, in addition, and Sarah in addition.
Yeah.
So, there's more of them.
Well, then there'd be the VBA.
What are we thinking for time for, for, how long is it going to take?
It'd just be like an hour.
So, we could do it on the Sunday. That, that was my question. We don't want to drag something out from that as well.
Yeah, like we could do like, you know, five to six weeks, and then with BCA and, if, if that's what you're thinking, BCA. And actually, you know, anyone who's going to use the building or is part of a public body, we should invite.
Yeah.
Just to know, because if we go over public records and what to do in terms of record retention, um, you know, even if you're not part of a board, you still are subject to public records. So, to answer your question, what about, um, May 12th? That's the second Tuesday in May.
I, this, the second Tuesday is the 13th.
Oh, sorry, second Monday.
The second Monday is the 12th, correct?
Yep, and I think that would be.
Yeah.
So, I, that's the left one, the planning commission.
So, that would be planning commission, but we could, we could try for the 5th, if you want, and see if the planning commission instead wants to.
I am gone in May. But I don't necessarily have to be part of this.
Well.
Um, I will, I will be back.
19th?
May 19th, and I'm driving back that day from South Carolina. And the 12th, I'm going to be out of the country. So, it might be something that has to be done without me, or I come in remotely, which is fine with me. I mean, I don't.
Well, let's try to do it so that you are, I mean, you're the chair of the select board, and, you know, you can kind of, if we need you to, you know.
Well, then we'd have to go into maybe, was June 2nd one of the dates?
Yeah, and also April 28th. I know that's pushing it to be very close, but I think if we concentrated on the policies that were part of this training first, we potentially could do April 28th.
That's the day I leave the country.
Oh, that's the day you're leaving, okay.
Yeah, and I'm gone for three weeks, basically.
Well, then, yes, it would be June 2nd.
Okay. Sorry, you guys.
That's okay.
Well, and that's avoiding the.
In turn, if I'm getting old.
It's going to be like June 2nd, and we're like, what, we haven't prepared fully?
Right.
Okay, so let's say June 2nd, um, I'm going to put it on my calendar right now, so I don't plan any trips.
Go back out of the country again?
What I'll do tomorrow is I'll bring as a report back out to the planning commission, this June 2nd date, and the policy that we adopted tonight, as to, uh, two things to make them aware of.
Right, and so, either through the, before their meeting or after their meeting?
Yeah, so I'll ask, um.
Well, yeah, because one thing is Terry, Terry getting here at 5:00.
Yeah.
Might be a problem, because she has to commute from, and you have to commute, so.
Uh, but if it's far enough in advance, if it's far enough in, if it's far enough in advance, we'll see.
Okay.
Right, the backup date would be.
He's using the bathroom.
I think we should do it first, and then have the.
Yeah, I think first before the meeting. Okay, well, let's, let's, Sarah can report back to us on that, the next select board meeting.
Yeah, I would suggest that the June 9th be the backup date, which is the.
June 9th, okay, perfect.
Okay.
I think I've got that, too. Um, okay, so, to get back to the agenda, um, announcements?
Oh, wait, no, do you want us to, um, a motion to approve orders? I'm with the motion, if you want.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Sarah's, okay.
Yeah, so I'll move to approve orders for 3625 in the amount of $32,980.18, and payroll for 3424 in the amount of $14,830.83.
I'll second that.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
You want to go ahead and do the minutes, too?
Sure, I move to approve the minutes for February 10th, 2025.
I'll, go ahead.
I'll second that.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Sarah. Announcements? Do you have any announcement?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
Is it a good one?
Two, two new select board members. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, we look familiar.
Wow.
Well, thank you for that announcement, Seth.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, now we're to public comments. Does anyone have public comments?
So, Fred Bagley has his hand up online. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Fred.
Um, I'm, I'm conveying a, an inquiry from a Mendon resident who is wheelchair-bound, um, who had difficulty delivering her tax payment the other day in the rain, um, and difficulty accessing the drop box out front. And she asked me if I would ask you if there's ways that the drop box in front can be made more convenient for people who can't exit their cars easily. Um, she mentioned the possibility of a mailbox-type drop, which has that extension out front. Um, and looking at the drop box out front of the office, maybe it could be relocated, um, a little bit more out of the driveway, with, so was some back-and-forth, somebody from their driver's window could access it. So, I just told her I would relay that concern to this, see if there was an, and any opportunity to improve it for them.
Okay, we will look into that and, and then let you know, so you can get back to her.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Fred.
Anyone else with public comment? Okay, um, the business, um, to attend to, Barstow Shelter Facility Use Agreement. What is that minor update, Sarah?
So, the minor update, um, was the, um, change in the way that food would be reimbursed. And so, um, in order to, um, enact the agreement with Rutland, or with Chittenden and Barstow, uh, the select board signed that agreement, but we need to ratify that decision at a meeting and make a motion to approve. But if you remember, I gave you the, um, the background information that, uh, Abbey Group is the, is the owner of the food, not Barstow, so they couldn't have the wording that existed in the original agreement. Um, and so that was updated in the updated agreement.
And is that the agreement that I took up to the town?
Correct.
Yeah, so we still need to.
Make a motion to ratify that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, that we ratify the Barstow Shelter Facility Use Agreement to, um, accommodate Abbey Group for handling the food for that agreement.
I'll second that.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, recap town meeting and election. I think we, um, as always, our staff has put on a fantastic meeting and a fantastic election, and I think we are very lucky that we had such a flawless, um, couple of days.
Yeah.
And thank you, Sarah, and of course, Joy and Jesse for all the work. And, um, I thought the town meeting went well. I always wish we could get more people, but, um, when Sarah and I were out in front of the town office all day, Election Day, we got very positive feedback about the town meeting. People liked the fact that it was available online as well. Um, I think that's something we'll do moving forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to report that we had nine to 10 people signed in online.
The only, um, constructive feedback I got was, and I should have thought of this too, um, we all probably should have thought of this, is when any of us is talking, we should use a microphone. There are a lot of people who are hard of hearing in the room. So, we'll just make a note next year that we'll try to remember to stand, either talk into the microphone so that the people, uh, can hear. And then, uh, it's probably not possible, but, um, if there were risers or a way for us to be seen, um, people would like to see you, like, I don't know, standing up when you're talking or something like that. But there, the people who gave the feedback were also like, you know, you can only do what you can do. Um, but Megan, I heard excellent feedback on your presentation. It was clear, it was comprehensive, it was detailed, but not too detailed. Um, and so I think, I think that went over really well.
Thank you, yeah. I, um, I got a lot of feedback, too. So, I, I really felt like on Election Day, um, the townspeople really expressed a lot of concerns and, um, about safety. Uh, people were very alarmed about stuff being put in their mailboxes. Um, people were, you know, they were upset about the spray painting, but, you know, those are things that we can look into for the next election cycle to see if there's anything we can do to make that, um, not a problem, because we did have, we did hear from people about that. So, um, but all in all, I thought it was a great town meeting. I really look so forward to the upcoming year. I just think we've got a lot of positive momentum, and I think the town people have a lot of confidence in us now, and I think we need to be sure to act on that.
Uh-huh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Um, so, um, we're going to, so, grant applications, a Class 2 roadway grant and the structure grant. Sarah, you want to update us on those?
Yep, so both of those, um, applications are due. We kind of touched base with them, with Chris. He will be, um, well, the two of us will be working on applying for, um, the, for the structures grant, the replacement and upgrading of the culver on Knott Road that had temporary repairs from the flooding event of 2023. And the Class 2 roadway grant would be the resurfacing of the Knott Road. So, um, both of those grants, uh, are due April 15th, but we expect that they'll be done by the third week of March.
Wonderful, wonderful. Um, so I'm going to adjourn, adjourn the meeting, and then we're going to, um, follow up with the liquor license quickly. So, I'm going to move, um, at 7:40, 7:35, that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, um, liquor licenses, Red Clover.
You're going to convene the Liquor Control Board meeting?
Okay, I am going, I'm calling to order the Liquor Control Board meeting.
No, we're on Liquor Control.
And, um, and so we are looking at liquor license for the Red Clover Inn. Uh, Red Clover Services doing businesses, doing business as Red Clover Inn for a first-class restaurant license. Are they opening their restaurant back up?
They are taking out a license, so I'm thinking that, yes, they are.
Wow. And then their, um, class, their consumption permit and third-class restaurant bar license for their catering outside. So, do I make a motion that we approve that liquor license?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I am going to adjourn the Liquor Control Board meeting at 7:38.